Good evening. Can we please have a motion to convene into public hearing?
I'll move to convene.
Second?
I'll second.
At 7:00 PM, roll call. Irene Jimenez. Aye. Caballero.
Aye.
Trent.
Aye.
Steinfeld.
Aye.
Palace.
Aye.
Gonzalez. Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and liberty with justice for all. Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Jimenez. I'm the Berwyn South School District 100 School Board President. To my left is Dr. Mary Havis, our superintendent. To your right, you will find our Junie. Apparently, she's not to do any interpretation if anybody needs it. Muy buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Elizabeth Jimenez. Soy la presidenta de la Mesa Directiva del Distrito 100. Para mi izquierda es la doctora Mary Havis, nuestra superintendent, y para su derecha de ustedes se encuentra Junie, que es nuestra trabajadora que se encarga de trabajar con las familias. Ella puede dar interpretación si alguien lo necesita. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Can we have roll call to establish court, please? Jimenez. Here. Steinfeld.
Here.
Gonzalez, here. Caballero.
Here.
Trent.
Here.
Palace.
Here.
Thank you. For those of you that may have not come before to a meeting, today we're having two separate meetings. We're having the public hearing and then we have a regular open meeting, okay? Para los que no han venido anteriormente, vamos a tener dos juntas separadas. La primera es para escuchar al público y la segunda va a ser para tener nuestra junta normal de cada mes. The public hearing notice is hereby given by the Board of Education of Berwyn South School District 100 in the County of Cook, the State of Illinois, that the tentative budget for said school district for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, will be on file and conveniently available for public inspection at 3401 South Ganderston Avenue, Berwyn, Illinois, 60402. And the first day of August 2025, notice is hereby further given that a public hearing is hearing and final budget will be held at 7:00 PM and the 17th day of September. So today is when we're having the final meeting here at Heritage Middle School, 6850 West 31st Street, Berwyn, Illinois, by the Board of Education, Berwyn South School District 100 in the County of Cook, State of Illinois. If we have any public comments for the public hearing, you can come to the podium. Please state your name.
Oh, my name is Kathy Paoli. Superintendent Havis, members of the board and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kathy Paoli and this is my 17th year as a reading specialist at Piper Elementary. I have come here today to speak up about a very important issue for our students, an issue very dear to my heart. A year ago last summer, I read a book that not only changed me but verified what I and many of my colleagues already saw was happening to our students. The book impressed me so much that upon my return to school, I gifted it to Superintendent Havis, who graciously accepted it and along with Mrs. Piper Simpson, agreed to meet with me to discuss it. You have most likely heard of this book, "The Anxious Generation" by Jonathan Haidt, and it has had a tremendous positive impact around the world. Since my meetings with Superintendent Havis and Mrs. Piper Simpson, I have given a presentation to the Piper staff as well as an introduction and overview of the book to the Piper parents. This past summer, I participated in a book study of "The Anxious Generation" to take a deeper dive into the book. I would gladly share my Google presentation with the board if they wish to see it. I cannot possibly sum up the book for you in this short time, but it is worth a read to make sure that we are leading the way in providing our students with the best possible education that we can give them. The fact is, District 100 is a data-driven district. When the opportunity for one-to-one technology presented itself, Berwyn South School District did what they believed was right for our students. They wanted to make sure that they had the same access to the best education as every other child had. But when you know better, you do better. And now, we know better. Jonathan Haidt's book has 65 pages of citations to support his research. This is not just one man's opinion. The world is listening and responding to this research. Many states and countries have already banned smartphones in schools. Illinois' ban will take effect in 2026, but in a wise move, District 100 began the ban this school year. When you read Haidt's book, you will understand that when he is talking about smartphones, he also means devices. The data shows that these devices, as well as the way they gamify the learning, have literally rewired our children's brains, and not for the better. With that in mind, it is important to note that some countries such as Sweden and Finland have begun to take away devices and gone back to paper, pencils, and books. As I've stated, I am a reading specialist, and therefore I think you should read the findings for yourself. Just as I did a year ago with Superintendent Havis, I would like to gift each one of you with "The Anxious Generation" book. I understand that there may be a rule against accepting gifts. If that is the case, you can pay me $1 for each book. I would love to have a discussion with you about the 65 pages of data that backs up the 295 pages of findings in this book. Even if we do not meet, I guarantee that it will either change your thinking or support what you already know. Time is of the essence, and we cannot afford to wait to act. Our children are too important to keep them waiting. Let's be the leading district when it comes to changing our course of action with devices. I will leave you with one more thought. It's how I have ended all of my presentations. Jonathan Haidt writes in his book that many tech executives send their children to schools that prohibit digital devices: phones, laptops, tablets. What have they known or what do they know about these devices that they didn't tell us? That is the most powerful data that we have. Thank you for your time. And I really am going to give you each a book as soon as my posse gets up here. So I think there's seven board members? Yes?
Thank you for the books. Anyone else for public comments? I apologize for my coughing. Can we have a motion to adjourn to public hearings and reconvene into open session?
Caballero, so moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. At 7:09, can we have roll call? Irene Caballero.
Aye.
Trent.
Aye.
Steinfeld.
Aye.
Jimenez.
Aye.
Palace.
Aye.
Gonzalez. Aye, sorry. Butler, absent with notice. Motion carried. Thank you so much. Okay. As many of us know, something tragic happened in our neighborhood yesterday. And I'm going to read something. "We are heartbroken by the tragic act of violence that took the life of Lincoln Middle School's Assistant Principal, Nuri Salih. On behalf of the entire District 100 community, we extend our deepest condolences to the students, the staff, families, friends, and loved ones who are grieving this unimaginable loss. We are saddened by this act of violence, which strikes at the heart of what schools represent: safe, nurturing places where students and educators come together to learn, grow, and thrive. The loss of a respected and beloved educator leaves a deep void that will be felt across our community. At District 100, we stand in solidarity with our neighbors in District 98 during this time of great sorrow. We hold close the students and the staff of Lincoln Middle School and all who knew and love their assistant principal and are keeping them in our hearts." The incident reminds us the importance of addressing both mental health and domestic violence and the impact they can have on our students, families, and community. As educators and community members, we remain committed to fostering safe, caring, and supportive environments for every student and adult in our schools. We also want to thank our social workers that were able to support North Berwyn students and staff today in their time of grieving. So can we have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We are going to start our superintendent's report with a presentation from Emerson. We have our principal and assistant principal, as well as members of our school improvement team from Emerson, who will be sharing the spotlight. Jean Sukie, Maria Escobedo, Andrea Samayoa, Jen Ortiz, and Heidi Correa. We're glad that you are all here this evening and look forward to hearing about Emerson.
All right. Good evening, members of the board, staff, and families. I am Jean Sukie, the proud principal of Emerson, and I am so happy to introduce Mrs. Maria Escobedo, our assistant principal, Mrs. Andrea Samayoa, our literacy coach, Mrs. Heidi Correa, and Ms. Jen Ortiz, who share our Math Core Leader position at Emerson. Tonight, we are excited to share with you our kickoff to the year, share our school improvement goals for this year, and our plan to achieve those goals. And to also take time to honor two staff members, continue to have an immense impact on our school.
All right. We had an amazing kickoff to our school year. Our back-to-school picnic, our school supply drop-off, and our curriculum night were well attended by our community. You will see by the smiles, whoops, thank you, by the smiles of our families and Tigers celebrating the back-to-school. We appreciate and are thankful for our amazing PTA and the city of Berwyn, who celebrated with us the first day of school. This year, we welcome five new team members. We have received such positive feedback from parents about them. We are so excited and so happy that they are part of our Emerson family. Emerson is a very special place, and we could not do it without the amazing staff and community partners that we have. We also want to take the opportunity to publicly thank our custodians and our maintenance staff. This summer, we have a new HVAC system, and they did everything they could. They went above and beyond expectations to make sure the school was clean and ready for when we started school. Students have shown so much joy, and they're just so happy to be back. Teachers have been focusing on establishing classroom routines and also using responsive classroom practices to make sure that all students feel welcome, safe, not only in their classrooms, but in our school in general.
To begin, I would like to share with you the published IAR data from two years ago. As this is our most recent data, as our school report card is not published by the state of Illinois at this time. So two years ago, just a little snapshot, we focused on improving student discourse in math and literacy and used the Kagan Strategy of Talking Chips to support our work. Our goal in math was to have 37% of our students meeting and exceeding, and our goal in literacy was 40%. As you can see, during the 23-24 school year, we did fall short of our goal, but from this, we developed a strong plan for last school year. Our subgroup data for our EL students made positive shifts moving forward. At Emerson, we not only look at students in the green and achieving students, but we celebrate our students that moved from red to orange and orange to yellow. In looking at our access exits, our students exiting access increased from eight students in 2023 to 10 students in 2024. This past school year, we continued our work on discourse and also integrated a vocabulary focus using Freyer's Four-Square Model as our teachers succeeded in implementing our Amplify Literacy Curriculum for the first time. I am happy to report that our preliminary data from last school year is showing great growth, and I cannot wait to share when this data is published on our school report card in October. At Emerson, we share success and take on challenges as a team. Collective efficacy and having positive intent for all has contributed to our successful start of this year. I am so happy to have this amazing team with me here tonight that will share a little bit more about our focus of our school improvement plan for this 25-26 school year. To start for math, this year, our goal is that 40% of our students in third through fifth grade will meet and exceed on our IAR assessment. We will be focusing on numbers and operations and operations and algebraic thinking for indicators, and we have some specific work examples that Ms. Ortiz and Ms. Correa will share with you now.
Thank you. Good evening. The last two years, Emerson has had a strong focus on discourse. We collaborated with the principal team, math coaches, and SIP members to successfully implement the strategy Talking Chips. We strategically used a rubric that focused on Tier 3 vocabulary and conceptualized understanding. All teachers, no matter the subject area they taught, engage in various walkthroughs that later consisted in reflections during our SIP meeting. The conversations many teachers had has led us to our plans that we see this school year. I'm excited to share that this year, I have a new math co-leader, Jennifer Ortiz, our third-grade dual-language teacher. Her input throughout the years helped get Emerson ready to write in math. Our plan this year will consist in the rigorous work of modeling math skills. Our students and teachers will model, assess, and reflect in the implementation of CER, Claim, Evidence, and Reasoning. Teachers will then, during PLCs, evaluate the strategy and review where is needed to assure our students continue to use their discourse skills. All homeroom teachers, as you can see on this slide, fifth-grade example, will give a formative and summative assessment per unit. Our dual-language classrooms in K through second assessments will be given in the language that they are taught in, which is Spanish. Formative assessments will then prompt teachers to next steps, such as helping students with concept misunderstandings, develop concrete representation or abstract thinking, and much more. The goal will be to support our students to successfully grow in the summative assessment that will be graded using specific item rubrics, as you can see in this slide.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Heidi. I'm really excited to be part of this partnership this year. As a classroom teacher, I'm ready to dive in and be part of the Math Core and really find ways in helping improve our modeling skills with our PDs and embed math discourse into CER for students to complete extended responses within the school year. Here, we're able to see another student work example, and as mentioned, we focused on discourse a lot last year, and our focus for this year is to really push students out of "I agree" within an extended response and really help transfer the developed skills within CER into their writing for their extended response. And then right here, as mentioned, I'm a third-grade teacher, so I really get that baseline within their student samples and see. This is one of our first formative assessments that we did, and although a lot of students were able to show their extended response by giving the response, we really want to be able to show. Oh, within this one. Oh, sorry. So that they can be able to give that extended response and really go into detail as to how they responded to the question.
Thank you so much, Ms. Correa and Ms. Ortiz, for sharing a little bit about all of the work that we have already started. We've had a very busy week of math PLCs. I also just want to give a shout-out to Coach Bethany. Bethany Witt is an amazing partner, and she is our math coach at Emerson, and she has also been so helpful in guiding this work. For literacy, our goal at Emerson is that 45% of our students will meet and exceed in IAR. Mrs. Samayoa will now share our school-wide focus and strategy to help achieve these goals.
Good evening. I would like to begin by sharing some of the progress we've made towards our literacy goal. All staff have now received professional development on CER, so Claim, Evidence, and Reasoning, and how it can be applied across all content areas, not just literacy. This has been a big emphasis at Emerson because we believe that all teachers are writing teachers, and that's why we've included special teachers and support staff in this professional development, so that we can all have that common language. And our goal is to make CER consistent and aligned across all domains. We've also continued this work during our PLCs. Teachers have been using rubrics and examples of student samples to practice evaluating writing, and this has led to a lot of great conversations and a better understanding of how to use the rubrics in a more efficient way. We're planning to bring in student work samples into our future meetings so that our conversations can be rooted in real examples from our classrooms. As for our next steps, we want to continue to build on this momentum. We want to continue those conversations of how to incorporate CER, not only into literacy, but into all subject areas. And professional development will continue, both during our building meetings and our PLCs. We want to strengthen teacher practice and engage in collaboration, again, not just from grade level to grade level, but across all content areas. We will also be bringing those student samples into PLCs and monitor student progress data closely. And finally, we'll share the summative data with our teaching and learning team so that our progress can guide the next phase of our work. And then, this is just an example of our staff buy-in. During our most recent professional development, our teachers shared their takeaways and ideas of how to incorporate the strategy into their daily practices in all subject areas. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Samayoa, for your updates and all of your efforts in leading this work at Emerson. We look forward to updating all stakeholders as we progress through this school year and are excited to share our promising most recent report card data with our families and community in October. Are there any items that have been shared that you would like any clarification on before we start our staff recognition component?
Yes. Thank you for that presentation. I think it's great how you included those student samples. It's really nice to see authentic student work and the rubrics that you'll be using. I just wanted to read into the record the question that I asked ahead of time, which was, "According to the state report card, only about 14% of EL students at Emerson met proficiency in English Language Arts, so I'm wondering how this conversation went with the school improvement plan team? What is the rationale for not focusing on this subgroup?" And the response I got is that my question would be addressed in tonight's presentation.
Yes, and so I know that we did share our EL data, that we did have students grow in each of the levels. And so we do work closely. Our EL staff member does meet as part of our PLC team to provide strategies and training for teachers on best practices. And so it is definitely a subgroup that we are very aware of, consider, and all that we do to strengthen that subgroup.
Okay, so, but that doesn't answer the question, right? Like, so is the rationale for not having a goal for the subgroup that you have an EL teacher working in your PLCs?
So we monitor our EL subgroup data closely, and our goals this year in our school improvement plan are around math and literacy. And so, under our math and literacy umbrella, we do focus on that subgroup.
How?
So I can share with you PLC documents. I'm happy to provide those for you. I'm happy to provide some of the examples that we have been going through during our PLC time. If that's something that you would like to share with you, I can share that with you.
Madam President, I don't know if that's necessary to see PLC documents. I don't think that would be...
Okay. Sure. So if there's something else that you think that I can share with you, I can definitely get back to the team.
And you can let me know that, and I can communicate with Principal Sukie.
No problem. Any other clarifications? All right, we are going to move on to our staff recognition. Tonight, we are thrilled to recognize the outstanding efforts of Mrs. Samayoa and Ms. Flores for their exceptional contributions to both our students and school community. Mrs. Samayoa and Ms. Flores took the initiative to create a club grounded in the portrait of a graduate qualities established by District 100. This club has become a powerful platform for students to embrace leadership, collaboration, and show a commitment to our school community. By giving students the tools and support to lead, they have created an environment where students feel empowered to take charge of their own education and contribute positively to the community. And here's just a real cute photo of our first group from the end of last year. In addition, Mrs. Samayoa and Ms. Flores have been instrumental in engaging fifth-grade students in meaningful school activities, such as supporting with our STEAM Night, Family Literacy Night, and even the iPad deployment for kindergartners, which is a task in itself. This hands-on involvement has not only enriched the learning experiences for our younger students, but it has also provided fifth graders with invaluable leadership opportunities. By actively listening to student feedback, they have fostered a culture of collaboration and improvement, and they ensure that students' voices are heard and acted upon at Emerson. Both of these Emerson Tigers have made a lasting impact, inspiring our students to become proactive leaders and responsible citizens. Their dedication and their commitment to our students and school are truly commendable, and we congratulate them this evening. So come on up. Oh, yeah. Oh, picture? Thank you so much for your support. We had a wonderful kickoff at Emerson, and we are excited to share just all of the good things that continue this way during our school year. Thank you, everyone.
Yes, we can pause for a minute for pictures, so please feel free. Yes, congratulations, and thank you all for being here tonight. We are excited to see how much our school improvement teams have grown at each of our schools. It truly is a partnership in our buildings to develop and monitor the school improvement goals. And, and Emerson certainly gave us examples of that this evening. So, thank you so much, and congratulations on all of your work. All right. We are moving on to our facilities update. So I just wanted to share some things. Since Emerson's here, we will also share about how we're doing, finishing up the summer project at Emerson. So, the exterior brick work is complete. They had to do some washing after some of the masonry work to make sure the bricks matched. We're still waiting for parts on a few UNIVENTS that need to be adjusted. And once we have those, then the programming will follow. The programming will help us better control the temperatures in the classrooms, which I know can be a little challenging at the moment. But once the, the programming gets done, that should be, that, that should make sure that the temperatures are, are able to be controlled. We're hoping for that to be next week. We had a construction meeting today, so that timeline is there. And roofing, we're still addressing some minor points, but full completion on the Emerson roof should be done soon. So, we are getting close to celebrating another successful summer project at one of our schools. The education center is continuing. You, if you've gone by, you see that we have more walls. And actually, some of the interior brick work is starting. Currently, they're installing concrete masonry units at the elevator walls and stair walls, installing electrical, and continuously working with our construction team on regular facilities checks at the building as it is continuing to grow. As we've mentioned, we're continuing to work on that long-range facilities plan with our architects, which will include options for consideration for the board as we begin to think about what will come next for the current Laverne Building. So that will be part of the long-range facilities plan that we expect to be done in the next few months, that we will be looking for feedback from the board. And then also, we're continuing to work with the architect on the life safety bond so that we can complete our Piper UNIVENT project next summer, our last one, to get our UNIVENTS and air conditioning in our buildings, as well as much-needed roof work at Kamenski. So that is our facilities update. Any questions? Okay, we did have two FOIA's this month that were submitted. Notable in the dashboard is to take a peek at our current attendance, or current enrollment numbers as compared to last year. District-wide, we're down about 108 students from this time last year. So we, you know, we do still continue to get some kids registering, but that's what our enrollment numbers look like as of now. And I will turn it over to Jenny for the financial report.
Thanks, Mary.
Sorry to interrupt, Ms. Hostie. Do we have a slide for the attendance, or?
It's in Board Book. It's in the dashboard in Board Book.
So, okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Our bank balance as of today is 59.2 million. Our revenue for the month-to-date is only 1.5 million, which is extremely low, especially for this time of year. As you know, Cook County has not released its tax bills, so we have not received any revenue from taxes. Along with that, which I'll talk about in the middle minute, is your state mandated categoricals. While the state has said, yes, we will fund state mandated categoricals, they have not as of yet. So, we are relying on EBF right now. Our cash flow short is up above, and it's in Board Book. Your revenue for the month-to-date for August was only 2.8 million. Our year-to-date revenue in September is only 3.8 million. That's usually our revenue for one month. That's very, very low. Our expenses for the month-to-date are 5.8 million. Our year-to-date is 9.9 million. And our overall fund balance is 58.4 million. On the next one, you'll see our grant snapshot. I take that back. Not only is our funding coming from evidence-based funding, but it's only coming from our state preschool grant. Those three lines that you see there next to Amanda Thompson. None of our grants are available right now in frisk. They were all available to write the grant, submit the grant. The state accepted the grants, but none of them have come over, and you can't do any expenditure reports. So we're kind of at a standstill with that. So I am closely monitoring our revenue and our expenditures daily to make sure that everything stays where we are. On the next slide, you'll see the budget that you have on the agenda to approve tonight for the FY '26. The, both the state really long form and the short form are in Board Book. This is what I call the short form. It's the easier one to understand than going through the very large one of 32 Excel pages. At the end of this one, though, could you go to the end, RJ, of the second page, right there? So the budget that you'll see that's here is a deficit budget of 4.9 million. That is your revenues compared to your, your direct revenues compared to your direct expenditures. However, when you upload this into the state format, the state does, and we reviewed this in the finance committee tonight, the state does acknowledge that we have a balanced budget. Because we have a fund balance, we're able to cover that deficit. Also, in finance committee tonight, we reviewed, we reviewed three different options, four different options. One of the options we looked at for bonds was restructuring our current structure for savings. That would bring us around $300,000 in savings to our bonds. The other three we looked at was, as Mary had mentioned, looked at doing life safety bonds. One is for the Piper UNIVENT project, and the other is to fund the Kamenski roof. The Piper UNIVENT project is roughly 1.5 million, and the Kamenski roof, for a full roof, is a million dollars. So what we're looking for is 2.5 in life safety bonds. Mary, we met with our architect. The architect then draws up the proposal, and it has to be approved by ISB, by the state, before we can move forward with seeking funding for that. And that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Do you want to try mine? Oh, here, just use mine, because mine's working.
This one's working. That was some...
Can you hear me? Now you can hear me. I can even hear myself. Thank you. President's report, finance?
A lot of what Jenny said, we looked at the bond restructuring, and we looked at the tentative 2026 budget.
Thank you. Policy?
In policy, we didn't have any, anything new to look over. We were just looking at things we have to, like, review and monitor. So it's just standard. So nothing to report there.
Thank you. We do not have a legislative report as of right now. Correspondence?
There was two correspondences.
Thank you. In Board Self-Evaluation Workshop, we were able to meet last September 11th, as a board. And we went over the board expectations and board protocols. Do we have any comments? Anybody wants to comment on that?
Yeah, I will comment. I think it's always good for the health of the board, for all of us, to sort of align and, on the things that we'd like to, to set goals on or to, to improve upon, especially having a new member now, too. And I, I thought it was a very productive evening. Helped bring a little bit of clarity to some of the things that might have been a little murky, for me at least, on the board. But overall, I thought it was a really successful and, and productive endeavor.
Anyone else? I agree. I think having Lori Grant from IESB, ASB, help us and support us with this. I think we, it was pretty productive. So I was very happy with that. So, public comments. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to follow the guidelines outlined in Board Policy 2230. See you in on action items on the consent agenda. Items may be removed from the consent agenda under request of any one member. Items not removed may be adopted by the general consent without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the board.
I'd like to pull out the budget.
Which is what number?
D.
D. Thank you. Okay. So can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item D?
Our motion?
Second?
Oh, second.
Okay, now our discussion could be, do we want to discuss the D, the budget, for discussion right now? Or do we want to put it in for next board meeting? Which I don't know if we can.
I think we, there was a motion, so first you have to make a...
Oh, thank you. Yes, roll call.
I, Renee Gonzalez, aye. Steinfeld?
Aye.
Butler, absent with notice. Palace?
Aye.
Trent?
Aye.
Caballero?
Aye.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, that discussion is whether we want to discuss the item D, which is budget, or do we want to put it in for a future board meeting? Which, my question to you, Mary, can we do that?
I, it has to be approved by the end of September, so we would have to reconvene as a full board to make the budget adoption.
Okay. Do we want to discuss?
My intent to pull it out was just to comment on it and so discuss it today.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I didn't mean to make Ms. Hostie nervous or sweaty. Sorry. Thank you for recognizing me. I wanted to pull it out because I think it's important to talk about it. The consent agenda is for, like, non-controversial things, right? Now, I'm not saying this budget is controversial. I think it's a beautiful budget. But I do want to highlight, you know, that it looks like a deficit budget, but, you know, it's actually, we're fine because of our fund balance. Fund balance. I looked at all this last weekend. So I think it's beautiful. I think it's a little disappointing that nobody came to the public hearing to talk about it, because this impacts everybody, whether we have children or not in the schools, right? And I know that we have community members who care, right? Who care about our schools and who want to make sure that we have the best for our kids. I love this community. I, you know, this is a good budget. I just wanted to highlight, you know, the great work that our D-100 administration is doing. Thank you, Dr. Havas. And that was all I wanted to say.
Well, I'm, I appreciate that you brought it back for that particular purpose, because that was a question that I also had. And Jenny was able to help me understand why we're, why does it look like we are under deficit, but we're not? So she was able to explain that to me. So thank you for bringing that up. And I agree, I think Dr. Havas has done, and Jenny, have done a really good job with our budget. At least since I began, we were not where we are today. So therefore, it's huge. We, I'm very proud of that. So can we have a motion? Unless anybody has comments.
Just sitting on the finance committee, and I made this comment today during the committee meeting. It's great to see how fiscally responsible Dr. Havas and Jenny Hostie are. And they really do think about every possible scenario and, you know, try to get everything, all the, all the ducks in a row, which can be very difficult with the number of schools that we have, contractors, you know, all the, all the projects that are going on. So thank you all for your excellent leadership and fiscal responsibility, which I know can be, it can be very difficult, but you all do it beautifully. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else having any comments?
Well, thank you for pulling it off the agenda to hear all these wonderful comments.
Okay, thank you. So can we have a motion to approve item D from the consent agenda?
I will move approval of the, of item D, the budget for the next school year.
Second?
I will second.
Roll call.
I, Renee Jimenez?
Aye.
Steinfeld?
Aye.
Trent?
Aye.
Palace?
Aye.
Gonzalez, aye. Butler, absent with notice. Caballero?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you so much. Public comments. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to follow the guidelines outlined in Board Policy 2230. See you in on any board member comments?
I'd just like to thank you, Elizabeth, for your words earlier in the evening. Yesterday was terrible. I'm sure that I'm not alone that many people are reaching out because no one knows which middle school is which. Having a daughter in middle school, and that nobody knew if it was what had happened right away. So thankfully, it was not at one of our schools, but too close, shouldn't happen anywhere, period. Unfortunately, it is happening everywhere all the time. And so, thank you for those words. And it's a very tough time to have kids in school or go to school, or, I guess, just be in this country, so.
Thank you, Mary, for that, too.
I would like to follow up those comments and echo what Ms. Steinfeld said. We're living in a really hard time right now. It's really hard to be a kid. As you know, I'm a teacher also in Schaumburg. It's really hard to be a teacher right now. And I, I wanted to thank our teachers and staff and everybody who works in our buildings for everything that you do. Because it's really, it's really hard right now. It's heartbreaking. Every day, I wake up to a new horror. So I have to disassociate myself just to get through the day. So I wanted to say thank you. And thank you to the social workers who were able to go over to D-98 and help over there. I want to make sure we're taking care of our social workers, too. And like I said, I, I really love this community. I've been here for over 30 years. And I've seen it change, and I've seen the demographics change. And now, you know, now we're a vibrant Latino community with other cultures woven in as well. And it's just heartbreaking that our families and our community is living in fear and that we're being persecuted. And our schools are so important right now. And everything that you all do is so important right now. So thank you.
I would like to, yeah, I would agree with all of that. I also want to extend thanks to Ms. Paoli for coming forward tonight to, you know, inform the board about something that clearly has, you know, made an impact on her. It just shows the commitment of the staff here about the well-being of all of our students. And I, for one, am going to, you know, encourage all my fellow board members to, you know, read the book, or at least reach out to Ms. Paoli and see, you know, what other information she may have and, and, you know, take, take her words to heart.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I guess I do want to say, yes, our communities are hurting right now. I'm a local president. I'm a local president where I work, and many of my staff members, my members, are very concerned with ISB near our schools. I know they have been seen through by our schools, and I work in Westmont, so they are all over. And our communities, our parents are afraid to, some of them are afraid to send students to school. So I know that we have a protocol and a process on how to follow that, but I just want to know that all of you are okay, and that you are being taken care of, and that you are, at the same time, supporting other staff members and supporting our students and families. And I know that you are, so I want to thank you for all of that you do, because, like Board Member Caballero mentioned, we are living in very hard times right now. And maybe some more communities more than others, but it's still tragic. So thank you for everything that you do. Anyone else? No? Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Our motion?
Second?
Our second.
It's 7:50. Roll call.
Ironee Jimenez?
Aye.
Steinfeld?
Aye.
Gonzalez, aye. Trent?
Aye.
Palace?
Aye.
Caballero?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, everyone, for being here, and have a good rest of your day.